To the Deliar of the United States of America and into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Second hand, a motion for the approval of the agenda.
I move the board to approve the agenda as presented.
Scott?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
A.J.? Yes, A.J.
Yes, we can, thank you.
So do I have a vote on the approval of the agenda?
Yes.
Thank you. Drew?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And now we have Honoring Excellence with Mr. Gallard.
Good evening. We have three Honoring Excellents presentations this evening. To begin, we're going to introduce you to our 2020-2021 Grow Your Own Teachers recipients. And we have four awesome selections this year. I'm going to introduce that for Vogelar, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, to talk about the program and introduce us through video of this year's recipients.
Thank you Dallas for that introduction. As you know, Board of Education, you've walked quite a journey with us. This Grow Your Own Teacher program is designed to address an issue that faces educators all across the country. Angie Reed, you know, as a career educator, that interest in our profession has waned over the decades and that teacher pipeline is something we can influence by engaging in Grow Your Own efforts. And we have several Grow Your Own efforts. This one specifically is to provide loan forgiveness opportunity to our LPS students of color who have chosen to make education their career. And in exchange for that, they stay in touch with us, have a mentor, connect with professional development here as well as their college of choosing, and at the end, they come back and work for us. We're delighted about this program. I am really here to just give the big picture and to thank Dee Rosecrans, who leads with Dr. Dixon Sehorn, the steering committee, that does the lion's share of the work of identifying, recruiting, identifying students that you're going to meet tonight. I am especially excited about this particular crew. As you know, this is our third class of Grow Your Own teachers that we'll be moving through. So it's something in four years. We've waited for this to come to fruition. And then after that, every year, we will get a group of four of our own students coming back and affecting the lives of kids here in Liberty. So we're excited about that. I was kind of reminiscing with Dr. Dixon Sehorn. I first met her in 2015 when she was a consultant with DESI on the Grow Your Own Teacher program. And through that journey, really, this conversation started and the pathway was charted, and now it's come to fruition. So with that, I'm going to have Dee Rosecrans come up here, talk about the process we use to select the folks that you're going to meet tonight, and then you're going to meet the four recipients of this year's Grow Your Own Teacher Loan Forgiveness Program.
Thank you, Dr. Vogelar. As Bob said, I'm here representing, I'm at the wrong height there. I'm here representing the Grow Your Own hence from this point on, G-Y-O-T Steering Committee, comprised of Dr. Andrea Dixon Sehorn, Ms. Bridget Herman, Mr. Michael Sharp, Dr. Precious Kurth, Dr. Rosemary Camp, Dr. Dwayne Smith, Ms. Melissa Taylor, and Ms. Colleen Jones. Our sincere thanks to the Board of Education for not only your philosophical commitment to the G-Y-O-T initiative, but also your financial commitment. We are grateful to all of our DAC administrators, but particularly Dr. Tucker and Dr. Vogelar, who have provided us with their vision and passion to help all students thrive. The G-Y-O-T Steering Committee's work begins each June and continues through May of each school year. Tonight's G-Y-O-T recipients are the fruit of our labors. The recipients of our third G-Y-O-T cohort will present themselves to you in a taped segment, thanks to Mr. Dallas Ackerman, Ms. Lynn Martin. You will meet Ms. Mary Martinez. She will attend the University of Central Missouri and wants to teach first or second grade, at least at this point in her career formation. Ms. Julia Wilber will attend Northwest Missouri State University and is planning to teach at the elementary level. Ms. Jadica Scott will attend Park University to become also an elementary teacher. And Ms. Paige Hodges is headed for Jackson State University to become an English, Language Arts, or Social Studies teacher. Please roll the tape. We welcome and meet our latest G-Y-O-T recipients. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mary Martinez. I went to Liberty North High School, and my future plans are going to University of Central Missouri. And I will study early childhood education to become a first grader or second grader or elementary teacher. Thank you guys so much for this opportunity. It means a lot. I've worked really hard to where I am now because of you.
Hi, I'm Julia Wilber, and I'll be graduating this year. I'm going to go to Northwest Missouri State University studying elementary education. And I just want to thank everyone that's brought me to this point to give me this scholarship.
My name is Jade the Scott. I went to Liberty High School. I plan on going to Park University, and I'm majoring in elementary school education. And I'm just really excited and grateful for this opportunity, so thank you guys, and I can't wait to work with you.
Hi, I'm Paige Hodges. I'm a recent graduate of Liberty High School and a future teacher of LPS. I cannot wait to start school. I'll be attending Jackson State University in Jackson, Mississippi. I'm still undecided on that eight inch level that I want to teach, but I am a big fan of English, and I love theater and speech and newspapers, so I'll cover the subjects that I would probably teach if I were in secondary education. And I just can't wait for Lexi to come, and I really appreciate this scholarship that makes the world to me to come back to the school, our school district, that has given us so much since we were so, thank you.
Let's give them a big round of applause. It was, it was awesome to get to connect with them this past week and record those segments. And after Paige had left, the next young lady came in and she informed me that Paige will be one of the commencement speakers for Liberty High on Sunday. So that's, that's just a little added nugget there. So, moving on, we recently had not one, not two, not three, not, but four library programs in Liberty Public Schools in Missouri to be named an exemplary by the Missouri Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So this evening, we have Mrs. Lisa Scroggs, who is the Director of the Missouri CLSD Program for DESI. She wanted to provide a virtual message to make this announcement. So Brian, you could roll that for us.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Scroggs, and I'm the Director of Missouri's Comprehensive Literacy State Development Program at the Missouri Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. On behalf of the department, I want to express my appreciation for the opportunity to recognize four school library programs from the Liberty School District that have been recognized as exemplary by DESI. On July 7th, 2018, Governor Mike Parsons signed Senate Bill 743, a section of which requires DESI to establish a process for recognizing library programs. During the 2018-19 school year, a committee of 12 school librarians representing all regions of Missouri and various library configurations met with DESI to develop the process for implementing the recognition program, which is optional for school libraries. While the recognition opportunity serves to highlight exemplary programs in Missouri, the committee in DESI saw an even greater purpose: to assist school librarians in improving their programs to provide better instruction for students and better support for teachers and families. Because of the breadth and depth of services provided by a strong school library program, the committee of librarians developed a rigorous scoring guide. It contains 21 indicators organized within five categories: instruction, leadership, library environment, library management, and staffing. Each indicator is worth two points, and a school library program must score 38 out of 42 possible points without receiving a score of zero on any indicator to be recognized as exemplary. Applications, on which librarians provided evidence and narrative for each indicator, were scored by a team of eight school librarians from rural, suburban, and urban schools located throughout Missouri. Of the seven programs across the state that received a score of 38 or better for the recognition, four of those schools are from the Liberty School District, an honor that speaks highly of the work of the librarians and of the support they receive from school staff, administrators, and your community. At this time, I would like to recognize the following four school library programs from the Liberty School District: Discovery Middle School, under the direction of librarian Melody Meyer; Liberty Middle School, under the direction of librarian Charlene Burns; Liberty High School, under the direction of librarians Christine Anderson and Lori Riedel; and Liberty North High School, under the direction of librarians Katie Fisher and Connie King. Each of these school libraries will receive a certificate of proclamation from the Missouri State Board of Education and framed resolutions from the Missouri Senate and the Missouri House of Representatives. Congratulations to these four programs in the Liberty School District. Thank you for your dedication, which is changing lives for the better. I wish you the best as you close out this school year. Thank you.
So big congratulations to those four schools. We quickly thought we would close out Honoring Excellents, and this was a video feature that just came about just here in the last day or so. And this is something going on pretty amazing at Liberty High School. Libertees, T-E-E-T-E-S, is a student-based enterprise that was developed for students with special needs to gain vocational experiences in real-world situations to prepare, prepare them to enter the workforce upon graduation. It is a series of three classes that begins with social skills, followed by vocational training, and then concludes with the hands-on experiences of operating the student-led business Libertees. Colleen Jones had been telling me about this. She said we need to get out and cover this. Corey Thomason, our awesome videographer, and I went over to Liberty High, not intending to do this feature. On Friday, we were just going to get some generic footage to close out the school year. Our second stop was Libertees, and we didn't make it from that destination. So we thought we would share it. This is a video premiere, and we'll be sharing this with the community very soon. So that will conclude then Honoring Excellents for this evening. Tell us what you're doing right now. What are you, what are you working on?
Adding ink to the screen to print out a shirt.
So this is our Career Explorations class. We started this as a way to encourage some of our special education population to gain some really important vocational job skills. There weren't a lot of areas for them to intern or to work in the building. So Crystal Bird and I decided to write a whole bunch of grants and start up this screen printing business.
First semester, we learned all about t-shirt printing and what we needed for it and making the logo and things like that. Then we had to print those 502 shirts in a week.
Who were they for?
The fresh, the upcoming freshmen.
We built the whole thing from the ground up. We got our equipment in December. Crystal and I have just watched a whole lot of YouTube videos on how to put stuff together. She and I put the whole screen together. We got so excited about it, and we've been printing ever since.
What do you like so much about the printing?
That can keep active, namely, I'm never staying in like one specific place for too long.
We opened it to some of the teachers in the building, and then as we got more comfortable, we opened it up to parent newsletters. At first, we were like, holy cow, are we going to be able to do this? And once we got started, we really just got onto it, and the kids all worked together. And honestly, the kids do all of the work.
What's the, what's the hardest part of the actual screen printing process?
Making sure that the t-shirts are even and not too high or too low on the shirt.
At the beginning of the year, Marcus was kind of just here. He came to class. He would help work on stuff. But as soon as we got all of the hands-on equipment, he really just jumped into it. And he has learned all of the different positions. He's one of our best printers. He's really good at learning different pressures and how we need to do it. He's really good at problem solving.
Um, I just want to print more so I can get assignments done quicker.
We've got a couple of kids that weren't doing great in school. They were failing a couple of classes. They've really gotten some motivation to pick up their grades because they want to be in here, they want to take this class again next year. We've gotten kids that are coming out of their shells. They're talking more, they're asking more questions. They're approaching people and strangers that they've never talked to to talk to them about orders and get their money. So they're, they're getting a whole lot of really great skills that even if they don't become screen printers when they grow up, they're going to be able to take those into the workforce.
We now move to the public comment section of our board meeting, and I'd like to read a piece that goes with this. People addressing the board will be asked to not repeat what someone before has said. Persons wishing to address any subject concerning Liberty Public Schools and/or education may do so at the podium. Persons addressing the board are asked to keep their remarks concise and to inform. Each speaker shall be limited to three minutes. A person or persons may speak only once at the meeting. Concerns brought forward during public comment may be addressed by the superintendent or appropriate staff members, usually within a week. I currently have one card. Are there any other cards? If you were storing them for somebody with you.
Mr. Reed, there may be more as well as, as we could create more.
As we can do that. And the only thing I would ask was for Rusty and Ian, if you could complete filling this out later? If you want to be contacted? Thank you. Megan Nielsen.
Hi. Good evening. I'm grateful for the opportunity to speak, and I'm grateful for your time. I loved watching these videos. We truly have such an amazing community as a group, and I am appreciative of all of your hard work. I, especially this year, I appreciate all your hard work in keeping our kids being able to even go to school this year, and that's been an incredible, I, I'm just grateful for that. I'm grateful that my kids were able to get their education continued in school as much as possible, and I look forward to next year where we can continue to increase that effort. And, you know, honestly, I wish the mask could have gone away, but seeing as we have less than two weeks, I'm moving on to more important things. And we hope that in the fall, that hopefully the conditions will make it that we can make sure that we are mask-free coming back in the fall. So anyways, I would like to talk about another issue that brings me tonight that's more concerning to me as a parent in the district. And I have thought about the way to addresses for a few months and have decided that I need to say something publicly. Maybe that'll inspire others to do the same, and maybe we can just open it up to a discussion and we can figure, we can kind of open the air, air it out a little bit, if that's maybe the appropriate term. I'm concerned about the Equity Program that has been discussed each month this year and what it's truly about. I'm all for equal rights for all children and families in our community and around the world. And I hope that my concern doesn't come across as anything else other than that. However, I know that equity movements we are seeing across the country are very different than the equality that all Americans agree on. I would like the school board to present the parents of the district with more transparency around why an equity audit is being conducted this year, who's funding it, what problems were happening that needed to be addressed, why were the groups chosen to assist in the audit chosen? It's possible that I have just missed this info. I've been trying to keep up data as much as possible, but I know that there's a lot going on, and so sometimes I don't get all the information that I need to get, and that's totally on me, and I understand that. However, I've researched two of the groups that have been used in the Equity Report. The Beloved Group is one that has been mentioned in the Equity Audit in the past few months, and then as well as the Mid Lake, the Great Plains Equity, Great Lakes Equity Center. And I've been a little concerned about their link to political groups, such as a group called the Unicorn Riot, which is a radical left news outlet, and with their suggestions to engage in quote racial identity caucuses where segregation is required. It also suggests that if quote white, white folks don't share, this is often tied to white fragility, and that should be named constantly throughout the session because whites, white people should not be able to sit in a space dedicated to talking about racism and not share their thoughts, end quote. I'm hopeful that as a school board that's concerned with our students, you would reconsider groups, using groups that promote segregation as a way to promote healing, because separate is never equal. I have a few more other concerns, but it looks like I'm out of time as well. But I would just, I'd welcome any comments. I'd love to hear any feedback. If you have some clarity on that issue, that would be great, and I look forward to hearing from whoever is able to respond. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Ian Smith? Are you comfortable going for?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Ian Smith. I'm in sixth grade at Discovery Middle School. And I am tired of wearing masks all day, and some of the rules in my school made no sense to me, like wearing a mask in PE for half of the year. Like, it made no sense. Also, my PE coach even said that we had to change the games to even play them, which seemed ridiculous. And during lunch is one of the two times that I get to take my mask off because we sit at a distance from each other with friends. It's hard to talk to other people since you are at a distance. Also, at lunch, you can only go through the line once. Like, that doesn't make sense. During class, you take your mask down, take a breath without getting a warning, or with getting a warning. Once you get one warning, after that one warning, you have to go to the office. To these ma, to, to me, these masks are unnecessary with these rules. I can't breathe like I should be able to. In some of my classes, the teacher takes the mask down for like two minutes straight to talk, and I don't even get to take the mask down for 10 seconds. I, I don't know if she thinks she's taking her mask down for two seconds makes her immune to COVID or what, but that doesn't compare to the bus ride when she only wears her mask once, or once every bus stop. And then when, when she's driving, she has it all down. In my opinion, masks and social distancing don't need to be together, together, and masks should be optional. We need a choice for our freedom. When my mask is on, it pulls my ears. When I'm in industrial tech, sawdust gets all over my mask, and it's hard to breathe because I'm breathing in sawdust. Another thing is, if I have a headache, I can't get much better because I have a mask on, limiting my breathing. Now, let's talk about how much I learned. I didn't learn much because I was only in school two days a week for about three quarters of the year, which didn't really get me anything, anywhere, because we had to relearn stuff that we had from last, from last year. And we didn't do as much learning is because we didn't have as much time to do any projects, book reports. And I really hope this does not continue next year.
Good evening. My name is Rusty, and I am the Ian's mom. I have two other children as well in the Liberty School District. When each one of you was selected as part of the school board, I would hope that you were willing to put all the kids before your own needs and wants and do what is best for them. And not be pressured by outside forces such as politics and money. I'm also sure none of you signed up to be part of this plandemic, but here we are, and I am sure those two inter faces, interferences that I had mentioned before are playing a role in why our kids are still masked. Our kids should not still have a mask on at school. As my kid had said, it interferes with their learning. It has never been about COVID, but it's always been about politics. If any of you have ever really looked up Dr. Fauci, you would know that he is a fraud, he is immoral, and he should be in prison for crimes against humanity. But that's who's giving us the rules that we should follow. I have personally contacted the American Frontline Doctors legal team because wearing a mask is a medical intervention that I have never signed consent for. Informed consent needs to be given. There are always pros and there are always cons. In this instance, there are no pros, only cons. Masks cause cavities. Masks cause facial deformities because you're mouth breathing, and when you're mouth breathing constantly, it causes your mouth to form in a different way than it would as if you were breathing through your nose. It causes acne. It actually, ox, sorry. It causes you to have an increased risk of COVID because you are self-contaminating. You can get bacterial pneumonia. It suppresses your immune system. It also makes kids be a germaphobe when they're out there trying to get onto each other and to be clean constantly. It's not good for your skin and your bacteria, your body biome. They are toxic. Most masks are made of toxic chemicals, fire retardants, that they are breathing in constantly. And just psychologically, they are harmful. They're ineffective, they're unsanitary, and they provide no protection. Sorry. The next topic that I would like to talk about is critical race theory. I don't know if any of you have truly looked into that to know what it is, but I would hope that you would keep that out of our school district and school system. I went to a meeting last night from Dr. Bren from Springfield, who let you know what exactly critical race theory was, and it's actually racist in itself. She, we were going to be contacting her to do another meeting at Care Towards Liberty, and I can personally send you all an invitation that I would hope you guys would come to the meeting and listen to see what it's about. And you can go back to Martin Luther King on that, that says, "I look to a day when people will be not judged by the color of their skin, but the content of their character." Critical race theory divides that not into socio, socioeconomic status, but into race, and therefore causes problems with our generation, my kids' generation of going to school and being segregated and split and being oppressed. That is all I have to say. So again, I will send you a personal invitation when that meeting is set. Thank you.
Mr. Smith, could you give us some contact information? Yes. So we can get in touch with you. Do you want to do that now? That'd be great. Sandra, put a pen. Do I need that, just email? Or do I need the whole thing? I'm so nervous. Thank you for coming. So, so much, and I hope that you're still here. I think there's more downstairs, so we're starting to switch. Downstairs, so we're starting to switch.
This room, thank you.
Then I'm not sure, but I think it must be on the way up, not up your way.
Everybody, good evening. Everybody, good evening. Everybody, good evening.
We appreciate both of those entities and their donations to these schools for helping out teachers and students. In addition to what is in my report, I would like to tell you about Audit and Finance Committee applications. We are currently still accepting applications for three, three-year terms for the Audit and Finance Committee. We have three members rolling off this year. Applications will be accepted through June eighteenth, and that has been posted on the website. It has also gone out in quick news, and to date, we have received two applications. So we would still love to have some more submitted, and those interviews will be held on June thirty, or twenty-ninth, excuse me, before that regular June board meeting. And to wrap it up for myself tonight, we are having preliminary audit work starting on June seventeenth. It seems like that rolls around really quickly, but that will begin June seventeenth. It will be virtual, and then the auditors will be onsite on, in September, to complete the audit work. And as Dr. Tucker said, we will then later this evening have a presentation on the preliminary budget for you. And that's all I have for you tonight, unless you have any questions for me.
Any questions for Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you.
We'll hear from you in a few minutes. Next up then, four point oh four, our Operations Report. Mr. Anderson?
Yes, thank you. Also, in addition to the report, that's uploaded on Board Docs, just a few items I'd like to highlight. First, Operation Safe has concluded. If you look in the report, there's a nice recap of the, in terms of numbers, and how many folks have kind of moved through that, the clinic. And just to highlight, because our teams were involved, that our delivery folks were involved up to eight hours, shuttles up to thirty-six hours, and then our nurses provided up to a hundred and fifty hours of volunteer hours for the clinic. Also wanted to point out that the COVID testing clinic will continue through summer school, available to staff and students, but we're seeing those numbers come down quite a bit, which is great news. And as we're thinking about the fall, some of our initial thinking is to maybe procure some test kits that we would then distribute at the building level based on the need that comes about if somebody's symptomatic. And so we're kind of looking to pivot for the fall, but that's some of the initial conversations that we're having, but likely to wrap up the testing clinic over there by Liberty High School. Facility master planning, very quick update. The demographer that we've worked with over the last few years, in conversations with him, because the last contract we've had with them, they allow for some updates, annual updates. The hope had been that the twenty twenty census data would have been available by now to really do a deeper scrub of the census data. That has not come through, and we don't expect that to come through for another couple months, but he is still going to come through and do a kind of a high-level update, which will be helpful for our facility master planning process, and that'll occur later this summer and into the fall. Also, this is a change for us, but in the past, before COVID, we always had opt-in for transportation for high school only. We are now going to pivot for K through high school, and that really, we did that through COVID, and it was, it was just very helpful for us in all of our planning and routing. The number of efficiencies that we're able to realize were worthwhile, and so we feel like we can go ahead and extend that for all grades, but we'll really work through the communication part of that, which we know will be important. Capital plan update really quick, because people will start seeing this in the community. Some of the work up at Heritage Middle School, the track and turf area, is going to be, be a little bit of an upending of what's out there now, and it'll take a good two months to work through that, beginning here in early June. So we'll have some barriers and some little parts of fencing and signage to discourage people from entering that space for the next couple of months. At last, just real quick, there have been some questions about Midcontinent, the old Midcontinent Public Library on Kent Street, and so yes, we do have title to that building. We have moved in, secured it. We've put in burglar system, alarm systems, and fire alarm systems. We're monitoring it very carefully for maintenance, and we are using it for some storage as well. So just wanted to let you all know that to be the case. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Questions for Mr. Anderson? Thank you. Dr. Vogelar, next up, four point oh five, our Human Resources Report.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to honor the GYOT recipients today. Very excited about these four LPS students and their journey in the career of education. Couple of things I want to pull out of the report that we uploaded from Human Resources today, just because some updates have occurred since the publication of that last week. One is with regard to certificated recruiting update. The district's received fifty-nine separations now, I think it says fifty-five, so since that publication to today, fifty-nine separations. But thanks to our hiring managers, a lot has changed in the last week. Of those positions, fifty-three have now been filled, so we're at ninety percent fill rate. Our administrative team and Human Resources Department are collaborating to fill the remaining six positions. So it's typical this time of year, and by the time the school year ends, to roughly be around ninety to ninety-five percent. I've mentioned that before, and we're on pace with that, so certainly that's good news there. The other update I wanted to give was with regard to the wellness premium differential. As you know, typically, our employees have the opportunity to volunteer, to earn three thousand points, participate in a health risk assessment, and a onsite screening in order to receive a differential for six hundred dollars of their cost contribution to premiums. We usually have around ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent of our employees participating in that voluntary program, and it pays the dividend of not having that six hundred dollar premium cost share. Because of COVID, last year and this year, the onsite wellness screenings have not been able to be hosted, so we are modifying that from a three thousand point requirement to a two thousand point requirement, and the requirement will not include the onsite wellness screening. Now, you can still earn points for that, and so many of our employees are going to their personal physicians to participate in the, in the screening, and then producing that for points as well. Right now, our Wellness Coordinator Rebecca Fisher is connecting with employees on the desire to participate in this voluntary program, and then what she could do to support them. But right now, we're looking at about sixty-six percent, a little more than that, roughly two-thirds of our employees that have completed the points portion, the two thousand point threshold, but only about a third who have completed the health risk assessment that is still a part of the requirement, not the onsite screening, but the health risk assessment, about a third. So completing both portions, we're sitting at about a third of our population. Now, a lot of that is skewed because many folks that roll off at the end of the school year and are no longer employed, they might not be choosing to participate in this because they're not going to be coming back in the fall, and so these numbers are skewed. As we get a little closer to the September first deadline, we'll update you on that. As you know, Rebecca's track record is to really put a personal touch on this, connect with every employee, make sure that those who want to participate have all the supports necessary to reach those thresholds, to waive that premium, and receive the differential. So that's an update on that. There's a lot of other content in the report. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have, but because those numbers had changed from when we published the report last week, I wanted to get those updates to you. Thank you.
Any questions for Dr. Vogelar?
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Dr. Vogelar. Last up then, as far as my report, a couple of things that I wanted to add to the items you have uploaded in Board Docs. First is to just express a tremendous amount of appreciation to our entire community. As you know, we're getting near to the end of the school year that has been unlike any other in our history, certainly in my experience over the years. So we owe a tremendous amount of gratitude to teachers, to staff, to administrators, to our students, to our families, and to use Dallas's hashtag for being in this together, and that there's no shortage of perspectives, opinions from varying, varying points of view. And we've had to navigate that over the course of this year, and I think have done incredibly well, which is a testament to our entire Liberty Public Schools community. Another group that I want to elevate, and that I don't do this often, but that is our cabinet, of which you have heard from this evening, most of them, in that they have really taken, taken the mantle on over the course of this year and carried a pretty heavy burden, I would say collectively. But I want to go back to last spring. If you'll recall, our Academic Services Department lost Dr. Beth Heide, and from that point to present, seemingly, we have not slowed down, particularly with our fourth floor and transitioning and taking on those roles that were vacated by Dr. Heide's departure, reorganizing, reshuffling, and then a pandemic hitting, and here we are fifteen months later. So truly a testament to our Academic Services team, also our Innovation and Learning Department, as it's currently known, their directors, all of their staff who support our schools, all of our grade levels, all of our programs. So again, tremendous thanks to our cabinet for weathering this over the course of this last year. With all that said, looking ahead then, we're entering into summer school here in the next several days. We'll be messaging to families, to staff, as to our finalized plans for summer school. Over the course of the summer, things will not slow down for us, and that will continue to prepare for August and the return of our students, the conclusion of Epic in the middle of June, in terms of them wrapping up their school year, but then also navigating a variety of scenarios and proposals and plans as we think about what the fall could hold for us. And so we're incredibly hopeful that we continue to trend in the right direction and make decisions that are in the best interest of our students at the forefront, but then also prepare for a variety of what-if moments or scenarios, as we've done since the very beginning of the pandemic. So again, thank you to everyone, to our board especially, for being alongside us throughout this. It's often a thankless job, but so much happens behind the scenes that people are not aware of as we've navigated this together in Liberty Public Schools. Couple of additional items that I wanted to make mention of, as you all know, seniors' last day was on the eleventh. They're preparing for graduation, as Dr. Moore mentioned, so we will be together at Children's Mercy Park on Sunday. So far, the forecast looks good, so we'll plan on celebrating our seniors from both Liberty High School and Liberty North, with the last day of school for everyone else being on May twenty-eighth. Lastly, it would draw your attention to the legislative session. We are in the process of combing through a lot of summaries from this last session. Someone said the other day that you start with nearly fifteen hundred bills, and by the time you get to the very last day of the session, you went and it was down to close to fifty or sixty that actually end up getting approved. A lot of those ended up hitting on topics that impact public education, some of which included voucher school, vouchers, as far as tax credits for, for community members, with the caveat being that they occur, that they, excuse me, that they take place in first-class counties, limited to students in Clay, Jackson, Jefferson, St. Charles, St. Louis counties, and those with a population of over thirty thousand or more. There are other provisions within that expansion, but that is something that has historically occurred this legislative session, so we'll work through the process of figuring out those details. In addition, other items that passed, we're continuing to work on the Missouri budget, with final approval to come from our governor. A couple of additional revenue streams that might provide additional support for the Missouri budget would be through the internet sales tax, as well as the gasoline tax. Some implications on school boards and elections would be candidate filing windows, and so more information will be shared out in regard to that. Board members being current on their taxes prior to them being appointed to the board, lowering the age from twenty-four to twenty-one in terms of individuals being eligible to run for Boards of Education, and then the use of public funds to support or oppose ballot measures. So we'll continue to comb through those items as summaries are received by the district from a variety of associations. There's still a couple of pieces left, finalizing the budget, but then also the governor's approval, likely to see a veto session or a special session pulled in a little bit later, so we'll watch that and report that out to the Board of Education as well. The last thing that I would say for those viewing online would be, we're close to summer, so I would encourage everyone to unplug, enjoy the summer, enjoy your families, and we'll be back at it again together in the month of August. So with that said, we'll open it up for any questions that the board may have of me.
I'm finished business, five point oh one, Kelly Brook Elementary is full of attention.
So five point oh one was something that we brought to your attention at our May study session for first read, and wanted to bring back that for your awareness this evening, tied to a couple of properties or developments that are in and around Kelly Brook. And so wanted to turn it over to Mr. Anderson to kind of remind us of where we left off with our study session, as well as some continued communication happening with those families within those areas.
Yes, thank you. So as is outlined in the few documents that are uploaded here in Board Docs, and I'll kind of walk through this fairly quickly, since we did spend some time on it a few weeks ago, there's about two hundred and seventy acres of mostly undeveloped land on the western edge of the district, mostly along Eastern Avenue. All of that ground is currently in the Shoal Creek boundary, elementary boundary. And in doing some evaluation of capacity concerns that we had at Shoal Creek, we realized that there was a real opportunity here to shift this land to Kelly Brook, which had some capacity opportunities. And so we spent some time in looking at the property and realized that it really did make a lot of sense. It was much closer to Kelly Brook, much of it within walking distance, which is always ideal if possible. And so we then developed a process, and part of that process is to identify any current property owners or families that are within this area. There are thirty-four homes in one specific part of this, these two hundred and seventy acres, and within those homes, there are only two families that have elementary or pre-K students. And so we reached out to them, had great conversations with them, because as we've mentioned, that they would have the choice of continuing on at Shoal Creek or changing to Kelly Brook. Both families really appreciated reaching out, really appreciated the option, and both of them noted that they can see Kelly Brook from their house, and so they always kind of wondered why this was the case. So that was really that with those families that were most directly impacted. We also sent a letter to every property owner, especially within that neighborhood, because some of those families may have younger kids, and you know, they might be affected by this. So they, on one, received a letter, but they also received the analysis that we prepared and shared last week, or a couple of weeks ago. We have not heard anything. We gave them our numbers. They have not reached out to us, so, but we do know that those letters were delivered about a week and a half ago. So as is outlined, there are four areas that we've kind of broken out, just so for the purpose of better understanding them. I won't walk through those, but the proposal that's before used to take all four of those areas and merge them into one action, and that is to effectively rezone that area from Shoal Creek Elementary to Kelly Brook Elementary. The middle schools and high school designations do not change. That's South Valley and Liberty North, and so all older students are not affected by that. So if this, if this does go forward, we will follow up, formalize the change within our transportation software systems. That is always used for, you know, new families that come into the district and what they consult to know what schools they go to. And then we'll also loop back with all those families again to let them know that this was finalized and will take effect beginning next school year. With that, if you have any questions?
I think this is a great idea. I think this is a great example on how to do something with the least disruption as possible for our parents. Administration has gone above and beyond in connecting with people. This is, this is a pretty impressive thing to be working on with everything else going on in the district, and to do this, and I've already talked to the parents and already notified anybody else that could be impacted down the line, is kudos to you guys for the way you handled this. This was well done.
Thank you.
If you don't mind, I should mention Jeff Baird, the Director of Transportation or President, who will soon be retiring, Assistant Director, they were the ones who, you know, we've been discussing if there are opportunities out there. They're the ones that kind of identified this area and really put together all the analysis, so really appreciate their hard work.
Good to them. Pass along our thanks for that.
We'll do.
And I think it sets an approach in place for future developments as others come online. This is probably something that we do each time.
Yeah.
At other times, maybe a little bit more in-depth, but certainly at the front end to say, okay, how does this play out and impact adjoining areas or boundaries across the system? So we know of several other developments that we'll probably go to the drawing board and see if there are other opportunities like that, so.
And I don't want to cut off any other comments or questions, but I want to get the motion on the table. So I move the board-approved proposal to amend current elementary school boundaries in accordance with the elementary boundary adjustment, Kelly Brook, as presented to the board.
Second.
Scott?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
A.J.?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to new business.
Six point oh one, as Dr. Westfall comes to the podium, is Elementary Fine Arts Curriculum, and so we're presenting that to you this evening for first read.
Correct.
And then we will bring that information back to you in the month of June for your final consideration, your final approval. Fast forward a year from now, we'll be having conversations in and around the secondary level fine arts curriculum. So we'll turn it over to Dr. Westfall.
Thank you, Dr. Tucker. A few, just a few things to tell you about this. We did not get to bring this forward to you last May, just because we were in all things pandemic. But Erin Money and Matthew Allison and his entire team, K5, have been working on this for a while. And so just to remind you that we are working with essential standards, learning intentions, resources assessments, and then looking at proficiency reporting. So we're moving towards competency, but we're still in that transition mode right now. So we're still looking at the components in the, in the current fashion that we're in. I have a lovely opportunity to offer you K5 music and K5 art. So that will be your homework for the month that you will enjoy. And Dr. Tucker said next summer, we'll be looking at 612 art, but on top of that, you're going to have ELA and a couple of other subjects. So I thought this was a really nice way to kick it off with getting back in the mode. If you want to flip forward, I'm just a couple, keep going to one more, one more. So when you get to this slide, when you have it active, just click on the elementary arts words. And then that will bring up all the units that you want. So Erin has put it together and his team have put it together, so you can see it very nicely. I won't bring you into it right now, but I just wanted to make sure that you knew what to click on to read through. So that's the visual arts one. The next one is music. And then just the agenda again. So that's just a future timeline for you to see. And that's it.
Lots to look at, to think about now to the month of June.
It was fun to look at.
It's beautiful.
It is pretty.
They did a nice job.
Thanks for the homework.
Yeah, of course.
So we'll see you back here in June on that agenda item, so. Questions of Dr. Westfall?
He's already gone.
I just have a comment. I was able to go to the Liberty Oaks Epic Fifth Grade Orchestra Concert last night and blown away. It was amazing. So really enjoyed it.
Thank you.
Next up then is 6.02, as far as Board of Education policy revisions. We have one item that is presented to you this evening. You will see this in the month of June for second read and your consideration for action. And that is policy GDN, in and around evaluation of support staff. So similar to the curriculum item, please take a look at it if you have questions between now and our June meeting. Please reach out and then we will bring that back on the agenda for your consideration at our June monthly meeting. Any questions on that? The next item then, under new business, 6.03 is the 2021-2022 preliminary budget. And as Ms. Sullivan is coming back, I want to thank and extend appreciation to all of our budget managers, which includes directors and principals, a whole lot of others that are involved in this process throughout the year, especially over the course of the spring, wrapping up one fiscal year, but then also planning and preparing for the next fiscal year. So thank you to them, but then also thank you to Mrs. Sullivan and her entire department just behind the boardroom as far as our business services department for the work that they do each year, but especially this year in what's turned out to be a unique pandemic experience. So we'll turn it over to Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you, Dr. Tucker, and I would like to echo the sentiments about thanking people. This year has been one, just like in every other world, that's been different and challenging because we don't know where we really need to be for next year because we don't know what should have happened this year. So we're doing our best to bring a budget that we hope is reflective of where we will be next year as we always do. So we'll get right into it. As you know, in March, we talked about the revenue budget preliminary information. Then in April, we talked about the expenditure budget preliminary information. And so tonight, we have posted for you on Board Docs, the complete budget document minus one document that I'll talk about for you. But that is for you to review and look over in anticipation of approving the complete document next month in June. We have also posted these slides for you if you'd like to look back over at them. Board Policy DB is the policy that covers budgets. And there are five components that are required of a budget that I have listed here for you. You will see all of them with the exception of the budget message. I usually save that and write that in June after I've looked over the budget and make sure that it is what we want it to be. And that will be included with the June document that we will bring to you at that time. The total revenue budget for all funds for FY22 is proposed to be $176,229,338. This is about a 1.1 million decrease from FY21's estimated actual. And as you know, estimated actual for FY21 is currently based on budget, so that will change. The numbers will change as we get closer to June and know what our actual ends up to be. Over half of the district revenue, please note, comes from local sources. That's the big blue piece of the pie. 55% of our total budget is from local funds. Operating revenue budget is next. It is $153.6 million of the total budget. That is an increase of $1.35 million over the current estimated actual revenue budget for the current year. The main sources you'll see for operating budget is local property taxes and state basic formula. They combine to make up 93% of our local operating budget. As I said, local tax revenue is one of our biggest pieces of operating revenue. We are estimating an operating property tax revenue increase for the year of $5.4 million. Included in that is $1.2 million increase for current property tax, a decrease of $700,000 in delinquent tax, and $4.9 million of TIF money rolling into current revenue because of expiring TIF in the Shoal Creek Valley. So those are the components that make up that $5.4 million. I did say a $700,000 decrease in delinquent tax. This year, collections have been phenomenal. We are collecting over 100% of what we anticipated in revenue in property tax this year, which is largely due to delinquent tax collections from things that weren't paid last year. As you'll recall, I've shared with you that last year, our collection rate was down. And we attribute that to COVID and people not being able to pay their taxes on time. So they were collected, they were just delinquent, and we have received them. So that's why we're expecting a decrease next year because we are anticipating things will be more on a normal front for collections next year. But that does still generate a $5.4 million increase overall on tax revenue. The $4.9 million in TIF is not subject to the Hancock Amendment cap for CPI growth, so we will get a little bit of extra revenue on that. And as you know, 2021 is a reassessment year, so we know that there will be an increase in assessed valuation. With the change in Clay County becoming a charter county, we have not received any information on our preliminary numbers. So we are really just going with historical trends and budgeting for a 2.5% increase, which I anticipate is low in a reassessment year. So I anticipate then we will have a better budget number for that after September comes when we can set our tax levy. So there should be an increase in that. This is just a look at our assessed valuations by category. You can see that we are heavily reliant on residential property tax for our local property tax. And residential property represents 66% of our total assessed valuation. There is a little dashed line down there in the second bar that's agricultural and it's only 0.22%. Commercial is 17% of our assessed valuation and personal property is 16%. Of that, we usually lose 11% to TIF, which will change since we have that big project rolling into new construction this year. And this is one of my favorite slides because it just shows what happens when we have a recession and how the things bounce back. And you can also see that in the odd years, when we are reassessment years, we have little peaks and then we adjust and little peaks and we adjust. Our five-year growth, average growth in reassessment years is 4.82%. And our five-year average for all years is 5.35%. So as a district, we can say we averaged about 4.5% growth in any given year over five-year history. 10 years, our growth because of that big, big trend down in the early 2000s is 6.89% in reassessment years and 3.76% in non-assessment years. So again, you average it out over 10 years, we're still right around the 5% growth rate in our percentage of change of our assessed valuation. So those things are helpful when we do predict and project reassessment revenue. The second piece of operating revenue that funds us greatly is the Basic Formula Classroom Trust Fund. We are estimating an increase in Classroom Trust Fund this year in Basic Formula of $1.22 million. That is, the funding state adequacy target will remain at 6375. The state adequacy target is the amount of performance or top-rated district spend on average in operating expenses to educate students. So that's a number that's figured by DESI. It's recalculated every two years. It will be recalculated in September of this year. It cannot go down and it is subject to a 5% cap. So this past, last year when it was recalculated for the current two years, it actually did decrease, so it remained at 6375. We will see where it goes in September. It will not go lower than 6375 and our projection document is based on 6375 all the way out until we are told differently that it raises. So we know, we'll get that at a minimum. The other assumptions for the Basic Formula Classroom Trust Fund are the revised dollar modifier of 1.078. And that's a cost of living adjustment that adjusts for purchasing power in localities. This year, I believe it was 1.081, so it did go down just slightly. But we get that bump in our formula funding as well. Our weighted average daily attendance estimate will be recalculated after the September count. And that includes the pre-K through 12 enrollment times a attendance percentage of about 94%. So the formula calculation at that point will change. As is typical, our September budget amendment usually accounts for all of these changes in calculations and things that are given to us after the fact, which is always very interesting that we're setting a budget with information that will always be updated after the fact. But we're bringing you the best information that we have at the time to set this budget. Basic formula is greatly affected obviously by student growth because that's what our weighted average daily attendance is based on. This is the latest demographer data that we have. So the additional weighted average daily attendance will be based upon a growth of 144. Every time the data is refreshed by demographer, we update our projection document going out the five years, including the latest data on growth. So to summarize what's changing in operating revenue, the primary and largest changes are the property tax revenue increase of $5.4 million, the basic formula of $1.22 million. Federal programs, we did receive our allocations. They did go up by $483,000. And student activity funds, we anticipate with a return to more normal activities that that revenue will also go back up about a million dollars. Decreases, as I indicated, pilot payment will go down, $6.3 million for the retirement of the Shoal Creek TIF project. You'll notice that I only put a 4.9 million dollar increase in operating. That's because once a pilot rolls off and becomes current revenue, it has to be split between operating, capital, and debt services. So you lose some money in the operating fund when it rolls off and becomes normal assessed valuation revenue. So we will lose a little bit there to offset the property tax revenue gain. And children's services grant will decrease by $890,000 due to the fact that we were not able to spend all of it this year because of COVID and the suppliers can't, we can't get them in enough because they're so overstretched with need that we're getting them in as fast as we can. So we will roll some of this year's revenue over and get less revenue next year, so that accounts for the decrease there. And if you have any questions while I'm going through this, please don't hesitate to stop me and ask as I'm going along, okay? The other revenue budgets are very simple. They are debt service and capital projects. Debt service will increase because of property taxes. It will decrease because of interest rates are so low. We just won't have the interest income like we have had the past year. They will also decrease because of state and assessed utility income. Those are about the only three things that feed into debt service. Capital projects will increase because of property tax revenue again. It will decrease because of the sale of other property. This past year, we sold devices. When we had a refresh with our new MacBooks, we sold all the other devices and that revenue went into capital. We will not see that this year. That's about a $2.2 million decrease in capital revenue. And some state COVID relief funds went into capital projects, so we will not see any in these capital projects revenue here either. Then we're going to move into the expenditure budgets. Total budget for all funds is $174,742,991. That is a decrease in expenditure budgets of $10.6 million. We have salary and benefit increases, completion of bond project decreases, and reduction in capital projects, capital purchases. Overall, that resulted in a $10.6 million decrease. You can see that salaries and benefits are the largest chunk of the total district budget and they come in at about 71% of district expenditures. On the operating side, the budget is $155.5 million. It's showing an increase of $4.6 million. That's mainly due to budgeting for salaries and benefits. It's for steps, column movements, C-Biz Phase 3, additional staff, as well as an increase in benefits the second half of the year, the cost of medical dental and vision insurance. Purchased services are increasing due to redemption of professional development and travel. And expenditures that did not happen this year will be happening next year. We will have a decrease in materials and supplies primarily due to not spending as much on COVID-related items. To summarize the primary changes here, we have the salaries, as I indicated, benefits. Repairs and maintenance are going up about $900,000. We are buying some technology contracted services to replace a digital backup support system to the tune of $600,000. And the instructional resources and professional development services budgets and travel are going up $1.3 million. I want to make it a point, however, that seems like a large increase in those professional development, travel, and instructional supplies. It's really not as big of an increase as it might appear to be. It's an increase over the current year budget, however, it's getting us back to where we were a year ago.
COVID stopped us from doing what we normally do.
We drastically reduced their budgets this year because they didn't need to spend because we did so much, virtually so much in-house and we didn't travel. So while that appears to be a huge number, it's getting us back to where we were and back to where we need to be to resume professional development and supplying resources to our teachers. So I want to make that point heard, that we're not just adding where we don't want to or can't or should we need to get back to where we were. The decreases, as we've talked about all along, are going to be in COVID-related issues, which should increase about $3 million. And that's in all of the PPE supplies, cleaning supplies. They have now been worked, if we need them, into normal budget streams, so they won't be indicated as COVID supplies. Debt service expenditure budget, it is decreasing and that's due to the redemption and the defeesance of the 2010B and 2011 bonds that occurred last year in March. So they went down just a little bit. Capital expenditure budget is decreasing by $4.1 million. Expenditures in capital, as Mr. Anderson has talked to you about, will primarily be for building upkeep, operational capital purchases for nutrition services, and technology and buses. So we're doing just the deferred maintenance and the things that we need to do to keep the buildings up and maintained. And the last piece, whoops, went too far. And the last piece, whoops, went too far, is the general budget summary. As you can see, we are anticipating an ending fund balance at the end of next year of 20.87%. As we know, once we get to June, we always see uptick in fund balance because of things that didn't get spent or projects that didn't get done. So I do anticipate that we will end with a little bit of a higher balance than that next year because I do anticipate that we will end this year with a little bit higher balance than we are showing as well. So this is the last required component of your budget book and just summarizes everything we've talked about tonight. I would be happy to entertain any questions if you have them. Otherwise, in June, we will bring you the complete budget book. It won't look that much different than what you see tonight that is posted for you. If we have any major changes, we will change the book. Otherwise, I'll tell you what we're anticipating and will most likely do budget amendments for smaller things that we know will need to be changed because it's quite an undertaking to change every page in the book for very small items, so.
So my talking points out of this will be our overall budget's down $10 million-ish.
Yes.
We're still funding salary increases, steps, and columns.
Correct.
And... I can't remember what, but it was good.
We don't need to blow up though.
You're right.
We don't need to blow up though.
Well, that was it. The main reason for the $10 million drop is because our capital expenditures have gone down.
Correct.
That's the main reason for the drop and we're still funding salary.
Correct.
And we've got a good fund balance going.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you.
That's a lot of work.
Again, as we've said on other agenda items, you'll have time between now and the June regular monthly meeting. So please dive in, take a look, whatever questions, thoughts you may have, clarification, please let us know and we'll bring that back to you at our June regular monthly meeting. So as well as an update in the coming weeks as we kind of walk through the month of June. So again, thank you to Mrs. Sullivan and her team. That concludes our New Business as it relates to the Board Agenda.
7.01, legislation advocacy. You, Dr. Tucker, gave us quite an update earlier. Is there... I have nothing additional.
I think a lot of our education associations are wrapping up their review of the semester or the spring session. And so whether it's MNEA or MSTDA, our teacher groups, or whether it's the Missouri School Boards Association, and your ties to that group, or others, the School Administrators Consortium, finalizing their summaries and really trying to get how things have settled out, next steps. So you'll likely be seeing a lot of that information hitting your inbox. In addition, the Greater Kansas City Cooperating School District, we have a meeting coming up in early June of which a portion of that agenda will be kind of a legislative recap. So we draw your attention to all of those summaries in and around how this legislative session panned out, so.
Lots of bills filed, not a lot of bills. 7.02 is MOSIP election authorization.
And this is something that we've seen before in the past. And again, as it relates to our participation in MOSIP, we are given the opportunity to support and elect, cast vote for Board of Directors in the Missouri Securities Investment Program. You have the motion language that's included there for your consideration, but the individuals are Rhonda Gilstrap, Kyle McDonald, Sean Manuel, and Alan Markley, as well as Pam Frazier, who are on the ballot to serve on the Missouri Securities Investment Program.
I move the board vote for Rhonda Gilstrap, Kyle McDonald, Sean Manuel, Alan Markley, and Pam Frazier to serve on the Board of Directors for the Missouri Securities Investment Program, MOSIP.
Scott?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
A.J.?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is 7.03, upcoming meetings. There are currently two on our calendar. The first of June, which is our board study session retreat. And remember, we moved the June 1 to the 29th, which is our regular... 7.04, board remarks.
Yes, A.J. Burr making a few remarks. This is a young man by the name of Jack, and be patient with me, I think it's Kankowitz. But in any case, this young man has produced a full-featured documentary that was shown at B&amp;B Theater last night, a premiere opening, red carpet, tux and tails if you so chose to. But this young man is a Liberty North High School graduating senior this year who has put a project together that is really impressive. And I think it speaks highly of Liberty Public Schools, Liberty North High School under the leadership of Dr. Curth. I can't call the teachers that are involved in this, but one that I do know of is, her first name is Jennifer. She's a broadcasting journalist instructor. But this young man, he stopped counting the number of hours that he invested in this project somewhere in October. And by that time, he'd spent actually 200 actual hours on it and produced this documentary that is truly well-done and is looking, he's looking now, searching for a platform or format where he can present it to the larger public. But truly was an outstanding program. A number of Liberty students participated in it and did an excellent job. It just, it speaks highly of the potential students can exhibit, especially when they're given encouragement, and also some freedom to move forward. He took advantage, he and his co-students, this virtual Wednesday, and did a lot of this work during that time. He needed access to a facility and was able to use Garrison School. We were able to provide it for him and, which is what we want that facility to be about to make use of by the community. And truly, he, as I think I stated, he has a full tuition, full tuition paid at the University of Missouri at Columbia in broadcast journalism. And truly, this young man is going places and many of the other students that accompany him. But I think it does say a lot about our school system. And I know there's a number of students that deserve recognition and Jack Kankowitz is one of those persons, along with his fellow students and teaching staff that supported him. Thank you.
I would like to send a little shout-out to the songwriters group at Liberty North. They did their first coffee shop a couple of weeks ago. To echo A.J.'s comments, what an incredible amounts of talent they showed. And they have only been together as a group since, I believe, the beginning of April. And one of the counselors at Liberty North is sponsoring that group. Nicely done. Nicely done. Any others?
I'd just like to, and I'm going to say this as much as a parent as I am a board member, as we're ending the school year and kind of to reiterate Dr. Tucker's words, if we thought back in last July or August that, you know, we'd be able to go to school all year and not have buildings closed and to be able to do activities and give kids the opportunities they had the way we have, I think I would have said that was a success then, and I think it's a success now. And I know that doesn't go without a lot of hard work from teachers and school nurses and custodians and transportation and food services folks and administrators. And so I just want to say thank you. I know it's not been an easy year, but as a parent of two kiddos in the district, I really appreciate everything everybody's done.
I move the board adjourned.
Second?
Scott?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
A.J.?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The board adjourned.
Before you leave...